Good evening, everyone. It is 5:29. You have one minute before our meeting. I asked everyone to put their phones on silent or vibrate. It is now 5:30. I want to welcome everyone to the East Point City Council. It's a special meeting tonight. Today is Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, and the time is now 5:30. So, welcome to the special meeting. And shortly after, at 7:00, we have our regular meeting. So, we're going to start with our roll call. Good evening, Ms. Walton.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Councilmember Curly.
Here, East Point.
Councilmember DeMonaco.
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Lucido.
Here, East Point.
Councilmember Moore.
Here in East Point.
Mayor Owens.
Here in East Point. Thank you.
The next, we're going to go right along to our AEW Traffic Study Road Diet Presentation by AEW, our engineering staff and company. Good evening to you all.
Good evening, Mayor Owens and Council. We met here roughly two months ago to talk about Nine Mile. At that time, we...
I'm sorry, excuse me. We can't really hear you. I don't know if you got us on speaker. And if so, can you turn the volume up, please?
Can you hear us better now?
Uh, no, you still kind of sound like you're back somewhere. Yeah.
All right, try this. No?
No.
Yeah, we can try that one.
I sound like a DJ on that one, so no.
That boy. How's that work?
A little bit better. But if you can make it better through the presentation, that'd be good. So, it can be a lot more clear. But please continue.
There, now we can hear it. All right. All right. So, as I mentioned, two months ago, we had met in regards to Nine Mile Road Project. At that time, it was directed to do a traffic study of the Nine Mile Corridor through the entire city to potentially look at doing a road diet, which would reduce the road from the existing five lanes down to three lanes. As you're aware, we have a federal aid project that's slated for next year for the West City Limits over Nine Mile. It's probably a $3.4 million project to reconstruct Nine Mile. That will also include water main replacement that'll be funded through the Water and Sewer Fund as well. That is slated for 2022 construction. And then from Grashit to Tuscany is scheduled also with federal aid powers in 2023, again, a roughly $3.4 million project. We were probably 80% complete with the design of the project for the West City Limits to Grashit. We put that on hold, knowing that the council wanted us to look at the potential for a road diet. We have completed that traffic study now. And here to present those results are with me tonight, I've got Mike Bigner, our Senior Project Engineer with our firm, who's in charge of our traffic engineering department. And also, Mo Luckfield is also with us as well, recently joined our firm after several years with Oakwood County as a traffic engineer as well. So, I'll let Mike take over here and give a summary of the traffic study.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Again, we studied the entire corridor, the Nine Mile Corridor from the West City Limits at Beechwood to the East City Limits at I-94. We were able to utilize a previous study that was completed by the Macomb County Department of Roads and built on the work that they had done in 2012. They were able to provide us with the study. We reviewed the data that they had and updated it where necessary. We validated the traffic volumes that were collected in 2012 with current data at a few select locations and considered it acceptable for use for the study. We documented the existing conditions with our traffic model in two peak periods, the morning and afternoon peak periods, which is typical for studies of this type. And we primarily focused on two factors for analyzing the adequacy of a five lane versus a three lane section. And that would be vehicular delays, which we are able to define as a level of service related to an average delay per vehicle as measured by seconds. And delay is typically reported with a letter grade A through F generally describing the quality of traffic in those conditions. And then also queues, or how many vehicles stack up along the roadway with those conditions. After collecting all that data, we evaluated the proposed road diet alternative. Again, just basically taking a lane away from each direction, eastbound and westbound of Nine Mile Road, under the same AM and PM peak period conditions, and compared those results. And you can see the screen that we're sharing is a direct comparison of Nine Mile Road and Grashit. The view on the left is the three lane alternative. The view on the right is the existing five lane condition. And we've got it queued up. The peak period for Nine Mile Road in the afternoon is actually 5:00 to 6:00. And we've got the simulation queued up for 5:35 PM. So, you can kind of see in real time what it might look like outside your window under a proposed three lane scenario. While we did find some negative impacts in terms of vehicular delay, which is what we would typically look at for traffic, we looked at some options to mitigate those delays and queues, extended turn lanes, et cetera. And we're able to reduce some of the initial negative impacts to a three lane section. But certainly, we weren't able to maintain the same level of service at every intersection through the corridor. We also looked at crashes throughout Nine Mile to determine if there were some potential benefits or dis-benefits to a three lane section compared to a five lane section. And we noted those in the report. And we also included a section of other observations. And these are items that are probably not well represented with the type of traffic study that is performed to evaluate queues and delays at signalized intersections. And we have also included those for your consideration. Those being the significant number of driveways along Nine Mile Road, the presence of both parallel and angle on-street parking, the fast food restaurants with drive-through facilities that will often queue during peak periods out onto Nine Mile Road, things of that nature that should be taken into consideration as you evaluate these proposed options. What we found as a general summary, most intersections will maintain an acceptable level of service. And when I say acceptable, we usually consider a level of service D, a letter grade D, which represents average vehicular delays of less than 55 seconds to be acceptable in most urban or suburban locales. That doesn't mean that that is going to be acceptable for the city of East Point. That's up for you to decide. But most of the intersections in the study area are currently at a level of service A or B and will continue to be with three lanes or five lanes. The one area where we did note some very concerning results was at Grashit. And I guess the other caveat was our study did find that between Kelly and I-94, you really need to maintain five lanes in that area as well. With traffic coming off of I-94, in the length of distance that you need to drop a lane, it doesn't really make sense to do that before Kelly Road for westbound traffic. So, our scenario that we ultimately evaluated, and you'll find the results in the study that we performed, does have three lanes from Beechwood to Kelly and then five lanes from Kelly to I-94. And I guess with that, that's a pretty brief study. And we're happy to go in more details as questions may dictate.
Happy to ask a question, Mayor. Oh, I think you're muted.
Yeah, I had a question. I was muted. Thank you. The people that's looking at this, I don't know if it's displayed. Why are we doing this? What's the purpose? And when this is done, what are we going to do that lessens that, you know, what's the whole point of us doing this road diet? And what do we, you know, foresee this doing for our city? Anybody there?
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I can give you my opinion on why a road diet is interesting to me. And that's because I think there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on Nine Mile. There's a lot of people that cross Nine Mile all the time. We have a lot of accidents. And I just feel like it'd make it safer for those pedestrians because a lot of them do walk. They walk to McDonald's, or they're walking to the liquor store or the gas station, and they're running across Nine Mile. And I really think that, you know, with the road diet, they're only crossing three lanes instead of five lanes. And I really think it's going to cut down on a lot of pedestrian accidents and really make it just safer. Because I see it all the time, people going across Nine Mile on foot.
I know a lot of people probably like, okay, that was one reason, which is a good reason. And then a lot of people thinking to slow it down, to add bike lanes. A lot of people, a lot of residents thought that was what it was for, too. So, that's why I'm trying to see what was the overall picture. On, I know Councilman DeMonaco has something to say. I'm sorry.
Sure, yeah. I was just going to ask, I mean, if we wanted to continue on that conversation, that's fine. But I agree with, you know, Mayor Protem Lucido on that. And we, I think, just to add, we have a lot of very large roads around us, you know. If, you know, if Nine Mile does end up being slightly slower, which actually, looking at this report, it seems like mostly it's only slightly slower. You know, you've got Eight Mile, Ten Mile. You're going east and west. And you've got, you know, Grashit, Ninety-four, going north and south, just surrounding Nine Mile, basically. But my question was just going to be kind of, if you can, I was trying to understand on page like four of that report, and hopefully, everyone has it up. But it's like the table of the level of service going from five lanes to three lanes. It looks like, you know, for most of it, I guess, I'd say there's only like one or two instances where they're not about the same. And sometimes the level of service increases for the three lanes. I was just trying to figure out how that happens. I mean, I'm happy to see that that's the results, but I was trying to understand that.
Yeah, and we recognize that as well. And I guess the best way to describe it is balanced within the roadway network. You'll find with three lanes, you'll have more uniform speeds throughout the corridor. And a large amount of traffic will be effectively metered at some of the intersections, say, approaching Grashit. Only so much, so many cars are going to get through where now you may get more cars that end up stopping at Grashit for a longer time. Some of those are going to get stopped at intersections approaching Grashit and result in maybe, like you indicated, slightly larger delays, very, you know, hardly noticeable. But that is less traffic that'll approach Grashit and wait while obviously there's traffic favored for Grashit at Nine Mile. Every other intersection, Nine Mile would be the primary road with traffic favoring Nine Mile or signal timing favoring Nine Mile.
Okay, yeah. It looks like the one rated E currently in the existing five lanes goes to a D, actually, into what you were saying was generally acceptable. It looks like, correct?
That would be correct.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Two questions. I'm going to show my ignorance here. I have no idea what diet presentation means. What do you mean by diet presentation? Is that like, it's healthy or what? What does that mean? Is that a hard question?
Yeah, so, do you want to, right? So, road diet is just kind of an industry term that's been adopted. It was, it's more prevalent in a roadway section that has four lanes. And you take that same space and go to three lanes, and you find little reduction in level of service under those scenarios as left-turning vehicles generally create a one-lane situation anyways, if there's a lot of driveways. So, that was a term that the industry created and has adopted over time. Doesn't necessarily represent the health of the roadway network.
And the other question, Madam Mayor, is that I wrote it down, would be three lanes from Beechwood to Kelly and five lanes from Kelly to I-94. Did I pick that up correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. And we would recommend some additional analysis to determine which intersections might require turn lanes. Certainly, Grashit and Kelly are ones where a dedicated turn lane would be warranted to minimize conflicts at those locations. So, generally speaking, yes, three lanes with additional turn lanes were warranted.
All right, thanks.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I'm looking at the traffic flow from the west side of Nine Mile to the east side when it's three lanes. And the traffic is backing up all the way to Grove and beyond. How many cycles of that light would a person, would it take from a person to get from the corner of Grove through the light of Grashit? Because it looks like it may be several cycles, would it being three lanes?
Maximum, it's like a link is 120 second. And I think it might maybe two side.
You said the light is 120 seconds?
Yeah, each cycle, you know, the second link, the intersection for the whole corridor is 120 second.
Yeah, so what the cycle length means is that's the time that it takes a light to go green for one direction and runs all the way through. And then it gets the next green, so effectively two minutes. So, with the queue that we're seeing and the delays and the length between those two, Mr. Loufe thinks that about two cycles might be what, you know, during a peak period, that somebody would wait to travel east in this particular part of the corridor.
Okay, so, so that would mean to go from Grove to cross Grashit, it would now take something like six minutes?
No.
If it's, you said, okay, how many seconds? Wait, is it? You said it's 120 seconds per cycle, correct?
Maximum, it's going to take one minute, minute and a half, you know.
Yeah, so that's what we've...
And if it takes three cycles, times three, or two, maybe possibly three, so that...
There's some other factors. We've, our analysis is showing that the average personal wait, 78 and a half seconds. So, you know, there's one and a half cycles essentially to get through, so.
Currently?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to say something. What does our Public Safety Director have to say on this? Is he here? AEW, did you work for our Public Safety Director? I would think yes, correct. Are you guys there? Because I keep talking. I want to say anything. Hello?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Hi.
Okay. I know that our, I think they're frozen, some of them are frozen, but I think that our fire chief is on.
Okay. Chief Sage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Just have a couple of comments on this. Obviously, from the fire department standpoint, our concern is going to be a longer time with one lane of traffic in a direction, we're going to have to wait for a light for cars to get out of the way. But we're concerned about it for our initial response, concerned about it for an ambulance response, and also concerned about it with a response from a neighboring city coming to help when we do get a fire. So, from a fire department aspect, those are my three big concerns. I would assume the director would echo that as well, the police side as well. You know, the bottom line is Nine Mile is our main artery. That's where our complexes are. And that's what we utilize right out of the chute to get just about anywhere in the city. So, I'm certain he would say the same thing in regards to that.
Thank you. I guess another question comes to mind is, when we bring up a traffic study for a road diet presentation, before we come to council, do we go to our Public Safety Director and our chief and ask them, is this a good idea before we display it? Because some of the things he just said makes sense to the point where we wouldn't even have this discussion today. So, I guess what I'm saying is, do we work together as a team before we implement projects, especially with the public safety people? Because they are the heart of how things go and how things move. So, I mean, AEW, before they put this project together, I mean, you know, did they talk to the safety director and the chief and think this was a good idea to bring to council?
Well, Mayor, if I could...
Oh, yes.
Because, well, so I think, to me, it's, you know, AEW put this report together. They're showing us, you know, the exact numbers are the professionals that put it together. And we hear it. And then if we have concerns, I think that's when we bring all, you know, the Public Safety Director in. At that point, I think we're, at least for me, I'm trying to understand all this right now. And then I think, you know, if there are concerns, then I think, you know, it'd be up to us to ask, you know, the Public Safety Director, Deputy Fire Chief here to get in on the conversation and give their, you know, remarks.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. But as professionals, AEW, their engineers in the public safety are professionals in safety. So, they need to come together first, present it to us, and then we have a conversation to me. Because we're not in the, well, I used to be in the safety business, but I'm not anymore. So, they specialize in it. We don't, councilmen. So, that's why I would like them to come together and, you know, work as a team when bringing projects together and seeing if it makes sense. If it, I don't know if we on the same team with this conversation, but so we don't waste the time and money of AEW and the time and money of people putting stuff together. You know, I just think it should be, you know, a team effort when we putting projects together and asking the people on the team, does this make sense? And then, just like the planning commission comes together and says, does these things make sense? And then it comes to council, I feel like that should be the same thing when it comes to engineering and our public safety. They have the main key role in doing this. So, AEW, because I don't, yes, I don't know the names. Can you say your name? Because the name is not showing.
Yes, my name is Diane Wokers, and I'm on Teppert. I'm Curbs. I'm a business that's in between Kelly and the Grashit area.
Oh, you're a resident?
No, I'm a business. Curbs on Teppert.
Okay, it's not your turn to talk, ma'am, until we get to the hearing of the public, unless you just have a question? Because this is just all, you know, AEW and Council Administration discussion. This is not time for the hearing of the public.
Okay, Madam Mayor?
Councilman Curly.
Thank you. I guess like anybody from AEW, Steve or whoever, what's the point if I've heard, eliminating the left-hand turn? Is that correct, that that's under consideration? And if so, what's the reasoning for that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, there you go. Good evening.
Yeah, hi, Steve.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Councilman Curly. I want to go back to Madam Mayor's earlier question. We were asked by the city council to study the impacts of traffic on the Nine Mile section if we were to reduce one lane in each direction. We did meet with staff a couple of weeks ago and show them the results of our presentation and secured feedback from staff at that meeting. We did owe it to city council to present this, to present this study to city council and to get everybody's input with regards to the results of the study. As far as Mayor, Councilman Curly's question regarding left-hand turns, the road diet or the three lane section that we looked at would have one lane in each direction, but it would still maintain the center turn lane. So, left turns would still be allowed.
Okay. Yeah, I thought we were trying to close down the further Nine Mile. So, we were thinking about increasing whether parking or bike lanes, not on this area. I thought we were doing a road diet for that. That's, I believe that's why I agreed upon it, so that we can see the traffic flow on the more business area going towards Kelly Road, between Kelly Road and Grashit. And I thought we was going to try to do bike lanes or extend parking or something like that. That's why I thought we were going to try to do the, well, we were in talks of doing a road diet. I didn't think it was in this area.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
So, yes, the area that he's referring to right now is between Kelly and Hayes. So, it would be that whole area plus on the other side of Grashit is what he's referring to. But, you know, if we decided to do the road diet, we would definitely have the space if we decided to move forward with bike lanes. And we'd also have more green space. I mean, that's something that, you know, council can discuss also. But if we definitely decided to do the road diet, at that time, we could just, you know, make that decision if we wanted to move forward with putting bike lanes on.
Right, okay. Well, going back to what Councilwoman Moore was saying, and going back to our fire chief, when you go to Grove going towards, you know, Grashit, it's a backup there. And that is our main, one of our main primary shopping areas. For people who shopping, things like that, or got to go out that way or come in, it'd be a major backup. And then also, that's where our high school is at. So, if the police department had to get to, you know, someone from the high school or anything like that in that area, it'd be blocked off and et cetera. So, those two comments from both of them, it makes sense. So, I know this is just in discussion, but...
Right, yeah, anything.
Yeah, no, I do see the traffic on that side. And I see where, you know, what Ms. Moore was referring to. But we also have the option that we could just do the road diet between Grashit and Kelly. They already made the recommendation that east of Kelly, that we keep it at five lanes because of freeway traffic, which I do agree with. So, by the high school, we could keep that five lanes also if we, you know, decided to go that route. That's another decision that we can make.
And I was going to add on.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to ask, AEW, what are possible, of course, one possibility is leaving at five lanes west of Grashit. Are there other ways that we could mitigate that congestion? I was just curious as to what options are between three and five lanes, you know? Can you extend like a turning lane? Or, you know, I don't know what kinds of different things. Just was curious.
Yeah, so those are some of the scenarios that we evaluated as mitigation measures. Extending turn lanes is one of the ways that we could reduce some of the queues and some of the delay at Grashit in particular. There are a high volume of turning vehicles. And if you can imagine, half the traffic that's waiting in line wants to turn right, all you have to do is give them a place to make that maneuver. And that'll reduce the amount of traffic that's waiting in the one lane that's available until you get to the turn lane. You know, there's pros and cons to a lot of the options, trade-offs that would need to be evaluated for their benefits and for their dis-benefits, if there are some. And that's what we would look at, I think, in more detail as we, as we get more into the detailed engineering. Um, get more into the detailed engineering design, we would look in more detail, how long do the turn lanes need to be? Could we look at, uh, you know, dual turn lanes or things like that, but, but then you're getting back into the same situation where your pavement width. Is essentially matching what you've got now. Um. And I, I guess. It, uh, it'll be, you know, council's decision what the priorities are, if it's to shorten pedestrian crossings. Or if it's to, uh, put, you know, bike lanes on street or have room for parking or. You know, any of the options that, that you might be afforded with, uh, you know, less through lanes. Um. So, a- and, and balancing out. Um, traffic and public safety concerns as well.
Yeah, according to what the mayor is saying and Mayor Protem, you know, about. Uh, you know, bike lanes or, uh, green space. Could we even then, as you were talking here, you're making me think of maybe another option where. We leave the two eastbound lanes, but reduce one going west. So it'd kind of be like a four lane, you know? It looks like the, it doesn't really back up on, you know, the, the westbound portion. Is that even, that'd probably be an option then too?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Councilman Domacu, uh, Domaco. One, one of the things I wanted to point out is this picture doesn't necessarily represent the whole backup from the, the. The westbound section. I want to say that queue length on the westbound. Uh, is about nine hundred feet. The queue length on the eastbound, I, I want to say we're showing around eleven hundred feet. So they're about the same. We just, we're just not sh- uh, able to show it all in this particular photo or this, uh, video.
Okay, might be a different peak time or something then?
Well, it's just cut off.
Okay, well, I meant, uh. West. From Grashit towards Beachwood. Like not, not at the nine and Grashit intersection. Does that make sense? You know, so. One lane going west. Grashit. You know, to Beachwood, but two lanes going east. Beachwood to Grashit. Does that make sense? Or is that what you're talking about?
Oh, I understand what you're saying. So that, that you're talking about one lane westbound, uh, west of Grashit.
Right, right, yep.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to point out that queue length, uh. On westbound east of Grashit also.
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, I think those will, anything at Grashit certainly makes sense that those will be longer.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you. Um, Steve, um, there's a lot of parking. On Nine Mile Road, particularly. In front of the VFW. Uh, would this plan suggest eliminating? That on-street parking?
No, that, that, that would be evaluated separately. The, the reduction of the lane in either direction had no impact on, on the parking that was adjacent. To the, to the roadway.
I, I know there's been a, uh, I, I know there's been a number of comments or. About, uh. A bike lane. Um. Has, has there been a study on that and? Uh, a safety study and they. See if that's, we should even consider that? Has there been some type of, uh, safety study on that?
We haven't looked at, uh, the bike lanes on Nine Mile Road. Uh, I understand there was a plan at, at, at one point that, uh, would connect Stinkler Shores. Uh, East Point and Warren and that, that plan was to put the bike path on Stevens. Uh, but I'm, I'm unaware of, uh, any studies on, uh, for a bike path on Nine Mile.
I'm sorry, sir.
I was just gonna ask Mike if, if, uh, we knew of any. From, from Mike's standpoint.
No, we're not a- aware of any and if, um. You know, if, if we were to use some of the additional space for bike lanes, we would, uh. Make sure that it was designed in accordance with. Current standards based on the traffic volumes and speeds. You'd be looking at some sort of a buffered. Situation. To provide the maximum separation between, uh, the different uses, uh, motorized and non-motorized. And, um, you know, uh, you're probably. Back to the same width almost that you have now. Um. But, uh, as we had mentioned before, with all of the, uh, driveways and intersections, it does introduce a lot of conflicts. For cyclists, uh, on-street that, um. Would really have to be carefully evaluated. Um, you know, certainly putting up, uh. Buffers that are gonna provide a level of comfort for cyclists is gonna, um. You know, impact vehicular traffic and it's, uh. Uh, ongoing maintenance, um, issue for, for public works and services. Uh, that would have to be evaluated as well. So there, there's a lot of things to consider and if, I think if that's the direction that. Council wants to go in, we would, uh, evaluate all the options available to us to create, um, an environment. That's as conducive as can be. Uh, certainly the traffic volumes and speeds are such that you'd want a, um, fairly protected facility.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
And so Steve, um. I was hearing you say that, uh, going westbound on Nine Mile, it is the same. We just, it's just cut at that point of the draw, of the, uh. Demonstration. So that would mean that the backup that's going from west to east is the same backup that's going from. Uh, east to west, which would be right in front of the. Police station.
That, that's correct, uh, Councilman Moore. It's a little less, I think it's about nine hundred foot. The, the westbound queue that we've, uh, estimated. Whereas the eastbound queue was around eleven hundred feet. So it's about a two hundred foot difference, but yeah, it's the, the, the video has that area cut off.
Okay. So that would mean that police getting a. Um. Having to go out may be impeded too by traffic. At their driveway trying to get out. Um.
You're saying the queue's shorter, right? You're saying the queue's shorter.
Saying the queue is shorter, but the. Police station is not. As far back as growth is either.
No, but shorter than it is right now? It's impacted right now then you're saying, uh, like.
No, no, that's not what I meant. I would, it's shorter than, uh, the, the westbound queue is shorter than the eastbound queue. Under the, under the road diet.
Yes.
Well, but isn't your. Looking at the, well, I guess in the AM it shortens and in the PM it, what? Like where on that table? I'm trying to look at that table while we're looking at this also. It looks like in the.
The, the, the table would, would indicate that, that the eastbound queue and the AM increases. By two hundred four feet. And westbound increases by one hundred and eight feet in the morning. And it increases by eleven hundred feet in the afternoon eastbound and eight hundred and eighty-five feet. Uh, westbound in the PM. So that's an increase over what's there currently is what our modeling is.
Oh, maybe I'm looking at the wrong, I'm looking at the timing. Which page is that?
Pretty might out, I don't have the. PDF open. It's table six, um.
Okay, I see it now. Page nine in the, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So at, at Grashit and, um, Nine Mile there, if we extended that, um, right-hand turn lane. Would that help with, um, Ms. Morris' like concerns if we made that, that turn lane longer? So, um, it'd give more area for the cars that are turning right onto Grashit?
That's correct.
So we could just extend the turn lane and then we wouldn't have to be so concerned about a blocking the police department?
The concern would be, uh, reduced, but there would still be queuing that would, that would resolve.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. Did you say something, Councilwoman Moore?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. And one of the other things that, um. I was listening to, uh, for it being three lanes going, uh. Eastbound. I believe that it was said that they can maybe make some kind of other. Arrangements for a turning right. Um, I, I'm just wondering, would that make more people? Illegally go through if they have to wait at that light illegally go through. Like, the Petco driveway. Trying to turn right onto Grashit because they've been waiting in line for a round or two. You know, and, and put more people in that plaza. That's just doing some illegal stuff to go through it. To turn. You know how some people go through a gas station to turn versus, you know, waiting on the light? Would that maybe make more cars go through that little plaza? Um. Which means now they're just really trying to drive out of it, but not necessarily shop in it. That could cause a danger. To people that's walking in that plaza maybe? I mean, it, I'm just thinking about, you know, any type of hiccup that could happen. With, with people being angry or whatever.
It, it's certainly possible and plausible that, that as, uh, delays. Increase, people are gonna find an alternate route. Um, and if that, uh, involves cutting through neighborhood streets or through businesses. Um, that may occur, uh, you know, there's certainly enforcement options that are available. To the city to, to mitigate that, but that's something that I think you'd rather not have to police if, if you don't need to. Um, and, and we did briefly mention that in our other considerations that, that we assume that all traffic would stay. On Nine Mile Road as kind of a worst-case scenario. Uh, you know, ideally, they would use eight-mile road or ten-mile road if those are viable alternatives to them. Um, you know, coming off of I ninety-four or heading to I ninety-four. Um, I, I think what we would, uh, hope doesn't occur is, is through traffic filtering into the neighborhoods and, um. And now those becoming cut-through routes. Which would again require, you know, maybe additional, uh, regulations on the part of the city to, uh. Mitigate that. To the benefit of the residents that live there.
Which, uh. Can you point out where, um, in the report? Uh, we should be looking to. To see that average length of time. I think that might have been the page I was on a minute ago. Um, for, for what Councilwoman Moore is talking about. Trying to just look at the numbers in, in your report.
Yeah, so I, I think on page four is gonna be the, the, where we, I think it's table three, existing level of service. And control delay. So this is where we assign each, um. Approach to the signalized intersection with a letter grade A through F. And, um, the corresponding, uh, delay in seconds per vehicle. Um. So the, uh, you know. As you move from left to right in that column, you'll see the existing. Section, the five lanes, uh, in the AM and PM periods. And then we directly compare that with the three-lane section in the AM and PM periods. And the, the last two columns, uh, just trying to capture the increase. So any increase from. Um, five lanes to three lanes is highlighted in red. Um, decrease is a negative number in black and, um. As we had kind of indicated early on. The, the networks sort of balances itself out. So there are a whole lot of, um. Numbers that jump out at you as, you know, oh my gosh, this is gonna be terrible. But, uh, I think that's why we look at the other, the, the micro-simulation, cause that. Um, tries to accommodate or account for factors that aren't always. In just a pure level of service analysis. So that's why we look at both. Um, metrics and present both metrics, uh, as part of our evaluation.
So what are the numbers then for that turning right, right there where Councilwoman Moore is asking? Um. You know, a, a eastbound nine mile turning right onto Grashit. Like the five lane and three lane?
Right, right. And I think for that particular movement, the, the average vehicular delay is about. You know, I think within, um. Uh. A, a range of, say it's essentially the, the same as it, as it is. The queues are the, the area where it brings up a concern. Those, those vehicles aren't necessarily, um. Uh, measured in the right turn lane because they can't get there. Uh, so once they get to the right turn lane, it's quicker to get out, but if they're in the through lane, that's where they're looking at, at that delay, so.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, one question and one comment. Um, you had mentioned that, uh. Between Beachwood and Kelly, it would be three lanes. Who would, where would the two lanes be going west or going east? And then the other question, or the comment is that, uh. You had mentioned that, uh. And I would hope everybody agrees with this. I would hope that nobody. If we do this project, that nobody purposely looks for alternative routes and, and, uh. Up our residential streets. And, uh, not turn on Nine Mile Road off the expressway. And choose to go down to Ten Mile Road. So. I hope we're not doing this and then end up. Having a lot of people take alternative routes. Particularly through the residential area.
Yeah, I agree, uh, Councilman Crowley. We need to, um, control the traffic on our residential streets. First, we haven't got that under control. Uh, any other comments?
I, I, Madam Mayor, uh.
I'm sorry.
But, no, it's my fault. I interrupted you. Uh, I didn't get an answer about. You've got three lanes from Beachwood to Kelly. Where are the two lanes gonna be, uh, going east or going west? And where's the one lane gonna be?
You would have, you have one lane eastbound, one lane westbound, and then a center turn lane.
Wow, well. Okay. I mean, okay for think, okay for thank you asking the question. Not okay that I think it's a good idea.
Madam Mayor. Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to know if they could, um, briefly review their safety report that they put in the packet.
I know we're on part two, the traffic road diet presentation. It sounds like, um, we're on the part three, the council and administrative. Discussion. It sound like we doing all three. You're on that already. It sound like we're discussing it and they're giving it, um, they're giving us their opinion. So are we on part three? Cause they did the presentation already. Are you down with the presentation, AEW?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we're on part three discussing it. Um. By A, AEW council and administration discussion with the council. So I just wanna make sure we're move, following, um, this agenda correctly. Um, please continue with, uh, Mayor Protem's question, please. AEW.
Yeah, I think, uh, um, stop me. I think the, the question was related to, uh, our crash analysis. Um, for the, the segment. Uh, we, if. Basically broke the segment into four, um, lengths. And reviewed, uh, the last five years of crash data for those links. Um, you'll see the one is slightly longer than the other. Uh, three, which, um, skews the data a little bit, but. Uh, we, we found several, uh. Predominant crash patterns that were similar in all segments. Um. And these were near, uh, the signalized intersections in particular. Rear ends are a very common crash type at signalized intersections. Uh, it's one that we would not expect would, uh, go away under either scenario and, and. Uh, under certain circumstances may actually increase with a three-lane section. Uh, angle crashes are of a particular concern. Um, in any circumstances would be what you would traditionally call maybe like a T-bone or a right angle crash. Uh, these are generally of, uh, more likely to result in, um, injuries or fatalities and. Uh, we would like to mitigate those. Uh, wherever we can. Um, with only, uh, one, um, approach lane, uh, in each direction, you would expect that. Uh, angle crashes would likely reduce under a three-lane section. Uh, as well as sideswipe court crashes, which are, uh, you know, generally cars moving in the, the same direction, sometimes opposite directions. Uh, those are your sideswipe type crashes that, uh, in. Uh, the case of, of Nine Mile, those are the ones that are more often to result in, um, injury crashes. uh, the case of of nine mile, those are the ones that are more often to result in um, injury crashes. Uh, aside from your single vehicle run off the road type crashes. Again, we do feel uh, like a three lane section is gonna result in more orderly traffic, more uniform speeds through the corridor, which generally results in um, less severe crashes when you've got two vehicles moving at approximately the same speed. The crashes tend to be um, less severe. So uh, that I guess is kind of a a high level um, review of our crash analysis. We did note that there are a uh, a lot of pedestrians that were observed, um, and as was uh, discussed earlier. Certainly shortening all the pedestrian crossings is is gonna be a benefit to pedestrians in the corridor.
Any other questions, counsel?
Uh, yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So one of the things um, that I've heard is if we change this from a a five to a three, um, maybe it will send other cars to either go down eight mile or go down ten mile uh, to avoid nine mile. But that sounds like to me that the businesses, that's all on nine mile would suffer from the loss of customers that would normally take nine mile through nine mile because they would be avoiding it. And now taking eight mile or or maybe ten mile. I mean, that's a scenario that I'm that I'm thinking about is all of the businesses that would be on the street, they may be getting more pedestrians and foot traffic. However, uh, foot traffic normally stops at a certain time. It's not like at, you know, eleven, twelve o'clock. And a lot of the restaurants that are on nine mile um, stay open late. Well, they used to before COVID. And I know that, of course, the traffic would be different at that time, too. But I definitely don't want to do anything that would affect the businesses that we now have in these point. It sounds like a good idea. Um, maybe we should look more into having um, Stevens more of a of a of a bike path so that people can get to east to west or west to east. Um, versus affecting the restaurants or infecting businesses that's located on nine mile. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Counselor, can I address it? Because I think I said that and not, I don't think AEW suggested that. I was just saying, like, if um, if someone's trying to go a longer distance, they'll hit eight or ten mile. You know, if you're going over to like Oakland County or something like that. I was just trying to suggest you might just hop on eight or ten instead of sticking on nine. Sometimes I take nine mile over to, you know, Oakland County. But if it was slowed down a little bit, I'd just take eight or ten then instead of nine miles so that it's a little bit faster.
Yeah.
All I was trying to suggest.
Oh, okay. And I understand that. And then I would too. However, there are certain restaurants that's on nine mile that I wouldn't have be, that I wouldn't actually go to anymore if I, you know, had to do that because I'd say, you know what? No, I don't. Do I want to wait in that traffic or do I want to eat? So that would be my choice.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment too on on Ms. Moore's response.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I mean, for me personally, I would probably more likely frequent nine mile businesses because now because of all, I'm, there's so many pedestrians, like I had mentioned, running across nine mile. A lot of times I try to avoid nine mile at all costs because of of that reason and that reason alone, because I know people who've gotten hit and who have accidentally hit people running across nine mile. Um, and I also wanted to add really quick to that, you know, by doing the road diet, it really would add a lot of green space on nine mile. And I think it would look um, look really nice if we if we, you know, moved ahead with doing something like that.
Yeah, I think everyone has some good uh, ideas and everyone has good opinions. I like, you know, I do like the green space, but I don't even think we do enough with what we have already. I like, I like to add when we're doing stuff already. I don't think we're do, we even through Christmas, I don't think we uh, do the city a service with the green space we already have. And um, with the traffic diet study, I I agree with a lot with um, Councilman uh, Crowley and Councilwoman Moore about the businesses, about the safety and the chief. I just don't see it being a good idea. I want to do a traffic study on uh, our residential streets and why people are turning certain ways on residential streets and speeding if it can be another way that they can, instead of going on my street, they can go, you know, make a left turn on Kelly or something like that. I just like to, uh, I don't like to add to things that we haven't solved problems in other areas yet. I think that's what I'm saying. We haven't um, solved the the traffic and the speeding in our residential streets, but we're gonna skip that part and do nine mile and grass it. And then we're trying to add green space to green space we already underutilize. So um, those are just are my thoughts on those. But uh, I think we, AW, did you have anything to add or counsel before we go out to the hearing at the public?
Mayor Owens?
Yes.
The only thing I want to point out is that we are running out of time to get our design completed so that the project can be uh, let by MDOT and constructed next summer. So we will need a decision uh, relatively soon as to what direction the the city wants to go, at least on the section between Beechwood and Grashit, that the the section that we're in design on right now.
Okay, how much does this uh, total cost again? To get all this done? I know um, MDOT is helping with the cost, correct?
Ryan, do you have that number handy?
Yeah, and project, the project uh, designed as this with five lanes is estimated three point four million dollars, just over two point four million dollars of that is being funded for finalizing.
Okay. And it's not a major thing because I know we have to do, we just put some money into um, getting the uh, the extra construction done so that we don't have to pump more water into the chapati. We just, at this point, just put a couple million in that. So if it doesn't have to be done, I say we we can wait. Uh, I I don't know what counsel has to say uh, with that, because we don't have to make a decision tonight, correct?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We're we're reconstructing nine mile whether we go three lanes or five lanes. So so the the cost, I don't think it's gonna make that much of a difference if we decide to do five lanes or three lanes. Because either we're using more cement or we're putting in green space. So I don't think the cost, there's gonna be that. I mean, I don't, maybe Mr. Pangori may have a different opinion on this, but I don't think there'll be a huge difference in cost. We're reconstructing no matter what. Um, and I was wondering, Mr. Pangori, if we can make, if we added this to the agenda on Tuesday, if we can make our decision um, a week from or two weeks from now, or do you want it sooner?
I I think that we can wait two more weeks, but anything beyond that is gonna start jeopardizing the the project for for next summer.
Okay.
And and Councilman Lucido, you're absolutely correct. The the three lane section probably will end up costing a little bit less than the five lane, just because there is, there will be less concrete. But in in either event, the the amount of funds that we have allocated from the federal federal highway administration is to reconstruct it with five lanes. So we we have sufficient funds, uh, regardless of which way you decide to go.
Okay, thank you.
Which, for either one, so for the five lane and the three lanes, uh, two different costs. What are both costs?
I don't believe we've done estimate, a cost estimate for the three lane section as of yet.
Okay. Yeah, because you said it's less. So I just want to know. I I always want to pay less. I just want to see the price.
Yeah, it it is gonna be less just be simply because there there's less uh, less concrete, less pavement.
Okay.
We don't have, we don't have the exact number.
Okay, okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Blum, how are you?
Good, how are you? Um, one one thing I'd like to ask uh, either Ryan or Steve. And I know streetscape cannot come out of street funds. And parking obviously can't come out of street funds, but bike lanes can come out of street funds. Is that true?
Yeah, bike lanes can be funded through your non-motorized funds. There's also a grant opportunities that you could apply through the through the transportation alternative grants program that you could um, that you can get some funding for bike lanes. That's streetscapes would not be eligible. The money that's already been approved for federal aid is strictly for road reconstruction and cannot cannot include streetscape work, does not include a waterway replacement that will also take place as part of this project. Waterway will be funded through the six water and sewer fund.
Would we lose any of the federal funds if we do three lanes versus five?
No, I don't believe we would.
Mr. Blum, the only reason, only way that would happen is if the project costs ended up uh, less than what the total was estimated. The the feds will pay eighty, eighty-one point eight-five percent of the of the um, the participating items. So if if the participating items end up being less than what the five lane cost is, then there would be that difference that that you would lose and technically lose in federal funds.
Okay. So it'd be best to stay with the five there?
Well, you you would, you would utilize more federal dollars with the five lane section. That that is accu- accurate.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just just as on the schedule, go back to the schedule. Since we're going through the MDOT's local agency program, it does take time to go through reviews with MDOT and to let the project out. Originally, we were looking at doing a draft of all the plans in September in order for MDOT to review and give any comments back so that we can submit final plans in mid-November and have a February twenty twenty-two letting and start construction in the spring. At the very latest, I I would want to submit for draft plans by the end of October in order to get final plans and just after the first of the year, that would get an April letting. And we're now ongoing later than that. The cost of projects go up as you wait longer through the year. And it is a large project. It's gonna take up the majority of the construction season if we were to let it out any later than the first of April. There's a chance we may not be able to finish the project within the twenty twenty-two construction season.
Okay.
Eric, I think we maybe add this to just the next agenda then.
What do you guys think? Sounds good.
I support that.
Does that give you all enough time to do what you all need to do, AW? For more, Marcus, I think you said something about research. I couldn't really hear you tonight. It was really bad. I I was able to hear Mr. Pangori. But does that give you all enough time?
I think so. If it's on the agenda, two weeks, I think that's enough time.
Okay, so we can put that um, on the next agenda. I think we have, uh, I guess again, we don't have to call a roll on that. That's just something you put on the agenda, correct? We have to make a vote on that.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessary to get a real, a real call for that, Madam Mayor. You have the authority to do that.
Okay, yeah, thank you, sir. I don't think so either. I agree. Uh, well, AW and counsel, any more uh, conversation on this? Are you guys ready to go out to the hearing of the public? I know the public might have something to say about it. What do you guys think?
And let's, let's hear them.
Okay, thank you. We're going straight to the thank you AW as well. Uh, going to the hearing of the public is now, um, we don't have two hearings of the publics when you have a special meeting. Sometimes I wish it wasn't a beginning so we can hear what you have to say before we go on to the presentation and we can address it. So we have to, I don't know if we can put it in in the beginning, um, Ms. Walton, next time. Um, and sometimes you don't know if it's better at the end because you want to ask, some people don't understand it and have to hear it to respond. So we just have to go by whatever we put on a special uh, meeting in regards to that, what would be best. So we have uh, you get three minutes in a hearing of the public like you do on a regular meeting. So the uh, first hearing of the public is now open, Ms. Walton.
There, um, I know earlier we had the woman from Curves. I don't know if she would like to unmute and speak now.
The business owner that uh, spoke earlier, are you still on here?
Yes, I am on the phone.
Yes, good evening. Thank you for waiting so patiently. I apologize about that, please.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, again, I just love uh, your running the meeting and and your ideas for our city. And I so agree as far as what's having a fire department on one side of nine mile road, the police department on the other side. I am a bike rider myself. I am also a DoorDash deliverer. And I can tell you already, on nine mile road, you get orders for five guys. I'm waiting to get into that parking lot. Trying to get from my Curves coming Kelly to Grashit, I've sat through three traffic lights trying to cross nine mile. We have a problem at Teppert where I'm at, we don't have drains. The drains for the water is important as far as, yes, we don't ride our bikes in the rain. But I'll tell you, last week with the rain, the second lane over, the closest lane to the turning lane. In my business, I have four rows of cement out from the front of my building, the easement, a traffic lane and a traffic lane. The second traffic lane was spraying my front door of water. We would have to duck on the side of the building and watch for the traffic to go by because it was explained to me, the DPW said, we would rather have, when I first came here, we would rather have the water stay out of the basement of the residence and let the the businesses deal with it. So we have a major problem with standing water that is a huge issue. I've been here now for three years. Again, if we had to have this bike lane, uh, why not have it on Stevens? We have so much, the the corners that I'm at, there is the animal hospital on one corner, I'm on the other corner. The gas station is the at the other end of my block. People have to set at least two traffic lights from three thirty to five thirty in the afternoon to get out and turn left. Horrible. With the door dashing, again, you know, why do we want to take the business possibly and push it on ten mile and nine mile? Again, when an ambulance flies down here and the police come from the police towards a accident on the expressway, they go barreling down here. Okay, where's the cars gonna go? And what's the end game? I DoorDash, I go on Martin and Masonic, both beautiful bike lanes. Do you know how often I'm on at lunch, I'm on at dinner? I can count on a hand how many times I've seen bikes on either Martin or Masonic. Masonic has more traffic and businesses, Martin is more residential. Let me tell you, I'm not seeing cars, whether it's from eleven to two or from roughly four until eleven at night. So what's the end game? Yes, we have that. Why not invest on nine mile? Cut out some squares of cement, let us go green, let us put in some nice shrubbery. I came from Jefferson today, nine mile up towards Kelly. Beautiful trees. Okay, so anyway, uh, my main concern again about the water, the police department on one side, the fire department, it's a bad idea. Why do we want to take businesses away from us? And right now, it's already a nightmare by the police station trying to turn, let alone going down to to one lane each way. So I really wish it'd be considered, but especially the drains, the water standing on the road, not good.
Thank you, ma'am. Everything you just said was a lot and we took it all in as much as we could. But can you email us? I would appreciate it because I want to address it properly in in regards to what you were saying. I know sometimes we come to the council meetings and things like that. And um, we still want to, if you have the time to email us, and we can uh, forward it to it, because you know, um, council forgets, you know, uh, staff forget. So when we have uh, something in writing, help us go back to the drawing board and go back to what you were saying to address it, if you can do that for us in those locations so we can address it properly. Thank you so much for what you do. And thank you for uh, staying on here patiently. Do you have anyone else?
I'd like to speak. My name is Steve Gunn from Wash Point Car Wash.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Gunn. Give me one second. You may begin.
Uh, yeah, so anyways, uh, I wanted to bring up, um, I liked what Councilman Curly and Councilwoman Moore brought up about the uh, alternative routes that the residents will be going through our residence. Um, I think that could be definitely detrimental to this uh, addition to or the a diet, as you guys have said. Um, I do think this will also hurt the businesses that are along this corridor of uh, nine mile here. And after a year and a half of what these businesses have been going through uh, during COVID, uh, I think this could just be kind of the final dagger to a lot of them. And they could, we could see more businesses along that corridor actually being uh, closed down. Um, my biggest concern was actually the city opening itself up to litigation. Um, from the standpoint of the fire and police, uh, their response times. Um, if they are unable to get to a resident or to an accident in a timely manner, and this gets improved, um, it could be possibly a litigation in the future for the city. Um, and also I wanted to bring up the, I believe it was brought up about traffic queues. um, like a level D at fifty-five seconds. And I know a lot of businesses along that corridor, like the fast food businesses or my business itself, which is a car wash. Uh, our business is based off of queues. So we are able to process vehicles at a very steady pace. Uh, my business alone can process cars in a queue of around thirty seconds per vehicle onto Nine Mile, which if the Nine Mile corridor is then being processed at fifty-five seconds, this could be very detrimental to my business or some of the fast food restaurants uh, along this corridor, getting vehicles off of their property into the queue of traffic along Nine Mile. And lastly, um, I wanted to know, and I listened to most of this meeting, but I never heard anything about a study about how many actual pedestrians and bikers ride down the Nine Mile corridor. Um, I know we had a lot of traffic, um, you know, those counts. Um, however, I didn't see anything or hear anything uh, about actually how many bikers. I know I personally have been on the corner of Saxony and Nine Mile for forty-plus years. Um, and so I know, I see it daily. Um, I was just curious. Uh, so that's basically it. Um, oh, quick, real quick. Um, Councilman Lucido brought up the green spaces, which I think is great for the city. Um, however, who will be maintaining these green spaces? And will this be on the taxpayers' dollar? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, Mayor, resident uh, mentioned something in the chat. I'm not sure if they would like to speak or if you wanted me to just read what was in the chat.
Um, if they were able to chat, I would think they will be here to read it if they leave.
No, Mayor, they are still in the meeting.
Would you like to um, speak on what you wrote, um?
Just.
Resident, business owner or guest? The reason I asked you that, Ms. Walton, it might be something you don't feel comfortable reading.
Um, I can.
To someone else saying it and you have to say something.
Sure.
Someone else doesn't want to say, but if it's a professional and which I would have stopped it if it wasn't anyway, do you feel comfortable reading it?
Sure, uh, she said buses will be impacted as well, wide turns and additional de- delays. Um, and then she asked a question of if semi trucks will be banned from Nine Mile.
Okay, that was a really good question. Some of those uh, questions will be answered. Um, well, we usually go into, did AEW, did you um, get some of those notes? Of some of the things that the residents and business owners stated in regards to studies and things like that? I think uh, in our next meeting, that would be something that, and those questions, something that we would like to see.
Yeah, we can, we can answer those questions in the next meeting.
Okay, and if you didn't get it, would you like them to email that to to you or to us and we forward it to you? If you all didn't get it?
Yeah, that'd be fine if they want us to email. But yeah, if anybody has any questions, they could email us, that would be fine.
Okay, because those were some really good questions and statements. And I don't want to, um, I don't want to bypass if they have a question or a statement and we don't answer those things or seek them out to find out solutions to them. Is that all, uh, Ms. Walton?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, that Ms. Holman?
Yes, it is, ma'am. Um, and I have a very bad connection, um, but I just wanted to speak up on behalf of the DDA board members. Um, they were made aware of this. Um, they were not happy with the idea. Um, several of them rely on, um, you know, the traffic moving um, to to meet their numbers. They're very concerned as uh, Councilmember Moore mentioned that they will lose the car traffic that is going through, that people will avoid uh, avoid the area. Um, we did, as somebody mentioned, um, do a study when the former DPW director was here with Semcog in the adjoining cities to look at a bike lane a- along Stevens that would also pass. The reason was that it would go past the parks, which made it um, uh, much more um, useful in terms of people going to the parks. Um, but I, and I have also heard from a handful of residents and business owners um, that are concerned. Um, of course, the business owners that they will lose, lose the traffic business um, and some of the residents in terms of, you know, what will happen on the side streets um, and and people cutting through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. And do we, um, one more time, do we have anyone else uh, for the hearing of the public, Ms. Walton? I don't want to.
Mayor, I don't see anyone else. There's no one in the chat. Um, and there's no, there are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, and thank you everyone for your suggestions and questions. Uh, we go on into Mayor and Council report, starting with Councilman DeMonaco.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I guess I'll, I'll keep my comments pretty brief, I guess. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank AEW. Thanks for the presentation. Appreciate it. Especially this little uh, thing where all the cars are moving. That's nice. I guess just in general, just like one general comment, um, in terms of just the road diet in general. Um, personally, I, and if you think of like where you, where do people hang out right now? Think about like where are there people walking around, going to businesses and meeting with others? It's places where it's walkable. Five lane roads are just not wa, it's so much concrete out there and is just to me, just is not friendly. And that's why I'd like to see at least a road diet or some of these considerations because I think it would actually improve business. I mean, think of anywhere you go, it's, it's not some giant free, you know, giant road where there's people walking around, going to businesses and things like that. You know, and uh, uh, three lanes will be safer for people walking on Nine Mile and things like that. So that's at least um, why, you know, um, I was hoping to have this conversation. So that's all, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Councilwoman Moore?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I do like the uh, it's not a cartoon, but it's, it's a beautiful thing. It it, uh, when you actually see something uh, moving, then you can get more of an idea of how it's working. Um, my only comment on this is, yes, the businesses may pick up more residents of the city when it comes to foot traffic because the foot traffic would be from the residents of the city. However, I know that a lot of the businesses don't only do business with our city um, residents, but also residents from other cities. Uh, I would hate to uh, cut out any other cities from doing business with East Point or other city residents from doing business with East Point. And only, you know, not only having our residents do it, but cutting it down for the other residents from other cities to do business. So um, as a business owner, I myself would know that it would cut down um, traffic for people going through East Point and doing business in East Point. But thank you, um, AEW for this presentation because it was very uh, stimulating to the brain to see these cars and trucks moving around. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Crowley, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, well, first of all, there there, thank you, AEW, uh, for a great uh, presentation. Uh, everybody's right, there is a lot to think about between now and our next council meeting to make a decision, whatever, whatever decisions that's gonna make. Um, it could be anything. There's a lot of variations that we could end up with. And the last thing, Madam Mayor, I would just say that I'm, I am very concerned about the suggestion of perhaps having a bike lane on Nine Mile Road. Um, I don't think it's necessary on Nine Mile Road. I think it would be a a disaster, a very dangerous project to put on Nine Mile Road. And uh, I would not support that part of the project if that's suggested. And uh, everybody have a great break before we start our next meeting, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Proton?
I'm gonna make this really quick because I would like a little bit of a break before we start our next meeting also. So I just want to take a moment to thank AEW for coming in today and doing this presentation. And um, we'll have a couple of weeks to think about it and hopefully our next meeting, we can come up with a final decision. You know, um, like I said, my number one concern is resident safety, so that's, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just gonna thank AEW, uh, the Fire Chief Sage for taking time out and speaking on behalf of the safety portion of this presentation. Our administration, Kim Holman and um, Randy Blum, Director, our council and the people that actually took time out, our residents and our businesses to help us with this decision-making. And um, that's important to us to hear what you have to say because it affects you. I know as a city, it affects us all when something comes to our city, but when it's directly affecting those people, I'm glad that you took time out to let us hear what you have to say so we don't base things on just studies or what we think, but on what and how you feel. So thank you for attending. And also, we talked about bike lanes all this time, so I might as well announce that we will have our first bike club right here in the city of East Point starting this Sunday. We're gonna meet at Fresh Choice at five PM. So get your bikes, uh, get your helmets and get some music and your water. We're gonna have fun. We're gonna bring health uh, and wellness here in the city of East Point. It's a long time coming. During COVID nineteen, we all stayed in the house and we're just trying to find a new way to get along, um, get healthy and have some fun here in East Point. So if you're not doing anything, um, come along, uh, Fresh Choice, um, our supermarket right there on Nine Mile, actually. And um, again, let's have some fun at five PM. Um, with that being said, uh, can I get a motion for adjournment, please?
Madam Mayor, can I just ask one quick question or a statement?
Yeah, you can come to, uh, you can get, join the group. Was that the question?
No, no.
You can be in the bike club, of course. Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to say, in addition to the comments that were, that were made from the business owners and the residents tonight, if uh, if, uh, Madam Mayor, if you or any of the council members have any questions that you would like us to, to try to answer or evaluate between now and the next council meeting, if you could please email those either to myself or Ryan, and we'll do our darndest to, to be prepared to answer those questions at the next council meeting.
Thank you so much, sir.
A so move for the adjournment.
Or motion of support for adjournment. Call a roll, please.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember Lucido?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonaco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Owens?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for attending. See you at seven. Hold tight.